Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission meeting. The time is 5:35 PM. Thank you for bearing with us. Welcome to our meeting. We do have a quorum of the commission as everyone is present. At this time, I'd ask for everyone to please rise as Commissioner Morales leads us in our invocation.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee, blessed are thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for our sinners now and at the hour of her death, amen.
Let us look to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do get started, I'd like to take a moment for a moment of silence. We learned earlier today that Mr. Bobby Galvio with Affordable Homes of South Texas passed unexpectedly and has done just incredible work throughout the region and to just pay our respects if we could just have a moment. Thank you for indulging me. Mark?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 Item three announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the city commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item 3A, Mayor's Announcements.
All right, I do have a few things to announce. Last week, some of the commissioners and I, Commissioner Kinsley and Commissioner Pettis, had an opportunity to head to Austin to advocate in front of the Texas Veterans Commission. They were two grants that staff had applied for and very happy to report that with the help and the advocacy of the commission and with staff, of course, we were able to secure $900,000 for our veterans here in the city of Harlingen and we hope to roll out that program in July. We already got notification from the board, from the Community Development Board. Mr. Jim Young reached out excited about it and I know Sandy from our department on staff is excited and so just look out for that and we hope to be able to serve the veterans of our community. The great thing about the city of Harlingen obtaining these grants is that we have the team in place. So 100% of the funds are going to go straight to veterans and no administrative overhead costs. So it's a great thing. The other thing is that I wanted to, I think I saw Javier Seura in here somewhere. He was. Oh, there he is. There he is in the back. I encourage everybody to follow the Convention Center page. There's been some incredible boxing events that have happened and so I had a chance to go out there on Saturday and I will tell you, it was a full house. It was a great event. There was hardly any parking left, full, sold out event and so it's a nice thing to do with the family. And of course, want to remind everybody of the state of the city that it'll be happening next week on Thursday in the afternoon. Tickets are still available. We're excited. We're going to have four different small businesses from our community providing samples of their food. And in addition to that, of course, the Convention Center always provides a great dinner and we've got a lot to talk about, everything that we've done together and what we will be doing in the future. And last but not least, I just want to wish all of the kids of the city of Harlingen a wonderful summer. I know my kids are getting ready for the summer and I know many of yours too and so I hope they have an amazing last week of school. That's all I have.
Item 3B, City Manager's Announcements. Mr. Gonzalez, anything to announce?
Yes, I do. I'd like to announce that we are having our first soccer game from the Red Crown Parrots this Saturday at the Harlingen Field at 7:30. So those of you that are into soccer, those of you that just want to watch soccer, go out there and support that local team. Also, City Hall will be closed on Monday, May 26th for Memorial Day. So all the employees that are here, those that are gone for the day, I hope you have a joyful and happy Memorial Day and that's all I have. Oh, the tickets, by the way, for the Mayor's State of the City are $25, correct? Yes, and they're available on Eventbrite, so they're very affordable. It's a great meal, so if you have a chance and want to attend, sign up on Eventbrite to get yours. Thank you.
And the proceeds are going to a local nonprofit. We haven't disclosed the beneficiary, but I'm sure that all of y'all will be supportive of these efforts because it's a wonderful nonprofit in our community.
Item 3C, City Commission Member Announcements. Commissioners, do you have anything to announce?
City Manager already mentioned Monday's Memorial Day. I ask everybody to please be safe throughout the weekend and at some point, please stop and think about what the holiday is for, which is to remember the people who gave their life wearing the uniform of our country. So please take a moment and pay some respect to them as well.
I invite everyone tomorrow to the Town Hall for District Two. Be here tomorrow, 5:30. If it smells bad, leave. They're probably going to throw some bad fruit at me or something like that. I'm teasing, but I hope to see y'all here tomorrow.
Nothing. Thank you. I just want to congratulate real quick the Harlingen South One Act Play Team. Yesterday, they captured the state championship, so again, go Hawks. Good job.
Item four, Proclamation, Presentation of Awards. Item 4A, Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. Tonight, we've brought Ms. Mocha. Mocha is a boxer mix who's about five months old. She's been at the shelter since about mid-April. She's getting her picture taken. She's very cuddly, very sweet. She's super soft. He got here today and I started petting her. She's super soft. She's looking for her forever home. So anybody who's interested in Mocha or any of the other animals at the animal shelter are welcome to go by 1106 Markowski or give them a call at 216-5220. Real quick, I did want to mention that the shelter is having a fundraiser at Chick-fil-A tomorrow night. Sorry, Commissioner Lopez, but we encourage everybody to go have dinner at Chick-fil-A and mention the fundraiser for the animal shelter and help support them in their efforts to feed the animals, care for them on a daily basis. And then the shelter will also have animals for adoption at Petsmart on Saturday from 11 to 3. From 11 to 3. So everyone's welcome to go by the animal shelter or Petsmart if you're looking for your next best friend.
Shannon, the Chick-fil-A? Is it both locations?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Awesome. Well, we hope Mocha is like all the others that have come before this commission and finds her forever home, her forever home.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 4B, Mayor's Business of the Month, Don Goyitos.
Goyito.
Goyitos.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners and community members. Mayor's Business of the Month is an initiative that started in September of 2023 and before we ask the owners to come up, we have a video we would like to present to them.
Hi, my name is Ricardo Silva and I'm the co-owner from Don Goyitos Restaurant. Don Goyitos is a family restaurant where our customers, they're not just customers. For us, it's like they become part of Don Goyitos' family. We greet you. We even do like, hey, when they ring the bell, just to make you feel part of the family. We love to serve our community and we love to see the happy faces when they like the food and we're talking to them. That's how we started. That's what inspired me. I want to serve my community, but at the same time, you know, I want to grow and let the community. Where can you find Don Goyitos in the heart of Harlingen? You can find Don Goyitos in the 417 West Van Buren. You cannot miss it. We have a big bull on the sidewalk. It's a night painting right there. Shout out to all our customers because without them, we would not be able to survive COVID, the flood, our break-ins. We have gone through a lot, but because of our community and because our loyal customers, we survived. So the shout out is to all of them that support us and thank you for your part of Don Goyitos' summer.
If we could have the owners of Don Goyitos to come up and accept their Mayor's Business of the Month Award and to say a few words.
I wasn't ready. Just kidding. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, esteemed guests here present and everyone seen, streaming on Facebook, on YouTube and all over the world. And to the people watching us from Japan, inisshimwa. I'm just kidding. A little nervous. From the bottom of our hearts, we want to say thank you so much for selecting Don Goyitos Restaurant as the Small Business of the Month. Last week, I received an exciting phone call from my very own Assistant City Manager, Josh, sharing the wonderful news that we had been chosen for this honor and the city also wanted to conduct an interview and do a video about our restaurant. I said, I don't do small videos. I only do big buzzer movies. I said, sure. So later that day, Mr. Brandon, he brought his equipment to interview us at the restaurant. Before Brandon arrived, Ricardo had asked me, he said, what are you going to say? I said, what do you mean me, chao? You're the one who's going to be interviewed this time. It's about time that the community and China gets to meet the other owner. I don't know if he has any words to say. So once again, thank you to the city of Harlingen and our supportive community for believing in their small business and for supporting our dream. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say, I think that both of you know how much we all love you. It is such a gem to have Don Goyitos in our community. I think it is just a reflection of who the two of you are. I love that you've got a little bit of your family on the walls, that it tells a story. Yes, I think everybody has gone and rung the bell. I think it helps, I think, both parties, right, as you're walking out and y'all to know the amazing service that you always provide. But I know that's in Daniel's district and he's a frequent, a frequent...
Baroque Sundays.
I didn't want to call him out, but yes, those things. And we just, you know, I'm so glad that you have been able to overcome so much and we know that you're resilient. And one thing that I can say about the two of you is that no matter what is going on around you, no matter what you're going through, every time I walk through that door, you have a big smile and you welcome everyone and I think that is why you're successful and you are like the epitome of Harlingen. So thank you so much for allowing us to celebrate you. I don't know if you have a few words. It's your district and we'd love to take a photo with you.
Guys, you know, I'm a big fan. My boys love it there. We often go on Sundays and my wife loves it because it's the only time she gets time to herself. So she'll order for us while we go to Gettys Park and play and then we come back and my whole family loves it. My sister makes it a point that when she comes from College Station, they would go eat with you guys. So you guys are just phenomenal and you're my favorite, guys. Thank you. Tell all the restaurants that.
Well, you already told China and Japan.
Japan, no.
All right, moving on. Next, we have Item 3C, Proclamation, Foster Care Awareness Month.
Our first proclamation of the night is recognizing May as National Foster Care Month, whereas the family is the foundation of our community and all children deserve a safe, loving and supportive home environment. And whereas in Cameron County, there are approximately 325 children and youth in foster care. And whereas foster parents, relative caregivers, child welfare professionals, advocates serve the community through essential care for children and youth. And whereas the importance of the family structure is best served in foster homes, modeling family living, not group care. And whereas National Foster Care Month is a time to recognize and thank the individuals and organizations that work tirelessly to improve the lives of children in foster care and to recommit ourselves to supporting these youth and their families who care for them. And whereas Cameron County is committed to ensuring that every child in foster care has the opportunity to grow up in a safe, stable and nurturing environment that promotes their long-term well-being and success. Now therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as National Foster Care Month. Here to accept the word is Brisa.
So I had asked Ms. Kristen to come and say a few words if you'd like to. And of course, Brisa, you're always welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. So when we got here, we saw each other and I looked at her and I go, are you talking? And she goes, no, you're talking. So we'll take care of that. Thank you, guys, for having us. Just real quick. As of March 2025, Cameron County is facing a critical challenge with over 300 children displaced from their homes due to abuse and neglect. These children may be placed with relatives through kinship care, in emergency facilities or in foster homes. In Cameron County, currently more than 500 families are receiving support from DFPS or CPS. Among the over 160 children placed in foster homes, more than 89 of them are situated outside of Cameron County, primarily due to a shortage of available local foster families. Furthermore, there are currently over 80 children within Cameron County who are available for adoption. Foster caregivers play an essential role in providing children and young people with a loving, stable and nurturing environment while they are unable to reside with their birth families. They collaborate with a team of professionals to ensure that each child receives the necessary support for their well-being and development. Foster families offer critical stability, including education, meals, shelter and access to medical care. Many children entering foster care may have previously lacked access to these basic necessities, which can significantly impact their mental, emotional and physical health. Organizations such as Blue Sunday and Foster Angels and others are dedicated to assisting these foster children and the families who take on the responsibility of raising them. We support caseworkers by providing resources and funding for these children and their families and our mission is to ensure that the foster youth of the Rio Grande Valley know that they are not forgotten and that they are indeed loved. I would like to express my gratitude to all of Blue Sunday's sister agencies, the city of Harlingen and our commissioners for recognizing May as Foster Child Awareness Month and ensuring that these youth's voices are heard. In closing, I would like to share a quote from the esteemed Mr. Fred Rogers. "We need to share responsibility. It's easy to say it's not my child, not my community, not my problem. Then there are those who see the need and respond, and I consider those people my heroes." Thank you.
Well, thank you, ladies, for being here. We appreciate all your hard work. Know that you have a partner in the city of Harlingen and we would love to take a photograph. Believe it or not, we had a call out to the commission to wear blue and support foster care awareness. This is the first time that they listen to me, so you're doing something right. But we'd love to take a photo with you and if there are any board members that would like to join as well.
And since you're wearing blue, why don't you come join us?
Get this out real quick.
Thank you guys.
So I think that really this is such an important, an important, an important issue throughout the region and so I do encourage everyone, I believe that this is a call to action and we thank everyone for being here. Please make sure to follow the social media pages for Blue Sunday, The Heart Gallery and Foster Angels who do so much in our community. Thank you.
Up next, we have Item 4D, Proclamation, Proclaiming the Week of May 18th through the 24th as National Public Works Week.
In recognition of National Public Works Week, whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are vital, important to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the citizens of Harlingen. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs such as drainage, streets and highways, public buildings, solid waste collection and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, design and construction are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And now therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week. In the city of Harlingen, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life. I now invite Chris Torres.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. It is my pleasure to come up to this podium and really let you know that these are some of the faces behind the scenes that work day in, day out. I am extremely proud and I know you've heard me say this before, but every year, it just accumulates, right? The staff behind me, it's amazing. I mean, from the youngest one that we have all the way to my age, right? They just, they overwhelm me with just their powerful, how can I say it? I'm at a loss for words because seriously, I can't say enough of the staff for public works. And so this is really a big moment for us, so thank you for this proclamation. Ruth, would you like to say something?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, City Commission. The only thing I wanted to add from what Christopher mentioned is that this proclamation is not just a reflection of the work that we do, but it's also a reflection of the hard work, the teamwork and the passion that each and every individual brings to the table each and every day. So it really has been a privilege to work alongside such talented and committed personnel here and I can tell you that we all work as a team. So and on top of that, I also wanted to say that thank you to our upper management, to City Commission and to the mayor for all your support.
Well, you know how incredibly impressed that this commission has been with your performance and it's so nice just to sit here and see you guys beaming with excitement and joy and really, I think that's because of leadership. And so, Chris, I think that what you've done with the department has been just phenomenal and it is because of your leadership and I think the state of Texas agrees with that, that it's because of your leadership that this department excels. And so we are very fortunate as a commission to have such hard workers here in our community and that answer the call at all hours. And so whether it's an emergency or whether it's the day-to-day grind you guys perform, you exceed expectations every day and I just, you know, wish that everybody else in this community would just see the day-to-day and what we see because I know that if they did, then they would be in just much of awe as all of us. So thank you so much for all you do and I'd love to take a photo with the commission as well. All right, moving right along.
Item 5, Citizen Communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for a public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. We had a total of two citizens that signed up, Mayor. First is Mr. Raymond Reyes.
Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket Drive. Basically, you know, continuation of the overview of the great progress Harlingen is making. We have some hiccups along the way, but it's okay. That's just the way life is. It reminds us that we need to always be improving the things that we do. We should keep in mind or stay focused on the task at hand is make everything better for the citizens of Harlingen. Just on a brief little hiccup note, I had inquired about the tickets for this address of the city. Reached out to some individuals up here about that. On the response... On the response that I got, initially, I was told that you could only buy a table. And they passed me along to somebody else, and they kind of told me the same thing, where I got a little bit distressed over that. So I have to buy, you know, a table. Well, I, you know, I had mentioned that, well, maybe I'll buy all the tables and stuff, you know, because I didn't think I was getting the right information. Finally, as I went down the chain, chain of command, as they say, I found out the correct price. And what actually happened was, in my opinion, and I've been in business a long time, the right information wasn't passed along. So, individuals were receiving calls, and they weren't kept up to date on the correct knowledge of how to address those calls. So, on the same token, we should make sure that, you know, the people are busy, they got all kinds of things going on, but the people they have under them should be kept in the loop when, you know, citizens call for information. It's not always going to be perfect, but if we try to keep current, it could resolve a lot of unnecessary issues down the line. I know that's the application I apply. And my business is enough to go through general managers, managers, assistant managers, lead bartenders, and lead waitresses and stuff, but we try to have, you know, everybody on the same page so we don't have issues. Unlike a city, I don't get taxes paid to me. I have the patrons pay for the services we provide. And I have suffered because of misinformation. So, just on a note, you know, we have correct oversight and make sure we're all on the same page so the correct information is being passed out there when people call. And, short but sweet, I think I beat the buzzer this time. So y'all have a good rest of the evening, but I have to go to one of my venues. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Delma, if you can meet with Mr. Reyes so he can follow your page.
Okay, next up we have Ms. Magda Benado.
Hello, how are you guys doing?
Good.
Thank you for being here and thank you for volunteering your time. I know a lot of the Commissioners don't get paid for this. And how you doing, Ms. Mayor? Hi, I believe I had spoken to Rini a while back about an issue that I had, but I'll speak about that in a minute. Actually, I only signed up for two of these, but there is an extra one that I did not print a picture. So, I apologize, but I'll just talk to you about that. I'm just concerned about, if you see the Pendleton picture, the ducks at the Pendleton Park, the city cleared out the vegetation. And I understand in Texas, we have a deep homeless problem, and I believe that might be the reason. But as you all know, when we destroy the root systems provided by trees and shrubs, we lose a lot of the absorption needed to prevent flooding and runoff and soil erosion. That's one of the reasons. And I'm always going through there because I go swimming, and I see the ducks get run over a lot. So, it's just a concern for me, and I just had two little ideas maybe you guys could do. I'm asking if you could possibly, because I'm a nature and animal lover, if you could plant some small hedges, that'd be awesome for the ducks. And in that area, I definitely, I know you're doing things, but it could use some grass for them. And also, I had an idea of maybe putting some cameras out there. I think that would be an excellent idea. So, if there were cameras on the street, people wouldn't be running over the ducks so much, I think. And also, I think it would be nice to have cameras all over the park in case you had to clear out all of that, of those trees for the purpose of homeless people or anything going on in there. I don't know what the reasons are. The second thing I wanted to show you is the next picture is there's a sinkhole on Dixieland that needs to be fixed. And I decided to just take a picture and come here and let you guys know. That is a definite big road problem, and I would hate for that to go straight through the street and hurt someone. I'm always going through there to go to Semenito, and so I noticed that, my husband and I noticed that. Third thing, I did not print a picture of this, but I just wanted to let you all know. I had spoken to Rini about this problem. Over on the intersection of Dixieland and Havreford, there's a stop sign by the South School. And you also put a road, a road crossing, which I thought was nice. But nobody stops for pedestrians because my husband and I go walking almost every day through there. No one stops for us to walk across. But my question is this. I know you said maybe there wasn't enough traffic to put the stoplight, but I believe we should have a three-way stop in that inner, in that little area. That would deter all the fast-paced people that go through there, accidents happening, or even a student getting run over in that area. So, a three-way stop, I think would be an excellent idea there. I'm a little nervous, but I just wanted to say, this is my first time speaking to you all, and I just want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benado. And we do have your phone number here. And I'll make sure, if you haven't already, I'm sure that Mr. Garcia will reach out to you. And I had seen a little bit about this earlier. So, I just want to thank you for coming out here and know that you're welcome to come at any time. We also have a District 1 Town Hall that is going to be happening. When, can Ms. Commissioner?
She's District 5.
I know, but that's Pendleton Park.
For District 1, it'll be July 23rd.
In July 23rd. So, there'll be more discussion regarding improvements and things that are going on at that time.
And where would this meeting be at?
At the museum, is that right?
Yes, correct.
At the museum. And you can find it on the City of Harlingen website. There's a list.
We'll be posting the information as we get closer.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right, that concludes our Citizen Communications. We'll move on to Item 6.
I just love how everyone loves the ducks like I do.
They're so cute.
No, no, I agree with her on the ducks.
Yeah. Sorry, Melinda, we all love ducks.
I do too.
Okay.
I love them. I love them when I go to Sonic, they're all waddling around. I love it, I love it.
Okay, Item 6, Approval of Minutes. Regular meeting of February 19, 2025.
Thank you for approving.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item 7, Consent Agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a Commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
All righty, gentlemen, is there anything to remove from consent?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Moving on to Item 8, Staff Reports and Other Discussion Items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the City Commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at the future meeting, at a future meeting with the request of the Mayor or after the request of any two Commission members or the City Manager. Item 8A, City Manager's Reports. So do you have anything to report?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, we'll move on to Item B, Staff Reports. That will be from Ms. Sandy Alvarez, CDBG Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm very happy to be here today to present a little bit about what our department does, Community Development. The City of Harlingen is an entitlement. I'm sorry, I have to control this, right? Our department basically administers federal grants from HUD, the United States Department of Urban Development. We are entitled for CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program. These are two grants that we get every year, luckily. And the reason why we're able to get these is because we're part of the three largest cities in the MSA, for Cameron County. This year, we received 913,635 in CDBG funds and $325,911.52 in home funding. Our, I'm sorry. Our department, there's one, there's five people in our department right now. We do have a vacancy, but it's been vacant for a while, and we're handling all of our programs. I'm sorry.
Sandy, before you go on, you said $933,000?
Yes, this was for '24, '25. We actually just received our letter from HUD for '25, '26, and we are getting a little bit more. So, I do, I don't have those numbers with me right now, but we're getting a little bit more for CDBG and for home.
Is this the first time you get a little bit more? Because it seems like every year it's a little bit less.
So last year, we got a little bit more for home and a little bit less for CDBG. So it kind of fluctuates. It depends on the allocations.
The allocation used to be over a million.
Yes. Yeah, so traditionally, it's, you know, it's dwindled. It normally goes down rather than up.
So usually, you have one up, one down, whatever, but it's both, but the amount together is reduced. This time, it's more, is that what you're saying?
Right, this time, both of them are more, home and CDBG.
Not what it used to be, but a little bit more.
Right, just a little bit more. Not anywhere close to where it used to be. Luckily, so. We do have a housing rehab and reconstruction program. This past year, we did, we reconstructed one home. That's a before picture and an after picture. Normally, that, actually, the cost for that home was $106,512. This was an elderly couple, disabled. The gentleman was a veteran. And so, you know, we were very happy. They were so happy when we handed over the keys to this home. We do have a little bit of funding right now for about two homes, maybe three. Unfortunately, the person that was next in line passed away, so we're working with the next person. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a little bit, about that program. We also have an affordable housing program where we help people with down payment assistance, first-time home buyers to purchase their home. Because of the prices of the homes, that they've gone up so high, we have to, we had to go from, $25,000 was the maximum amount of assistance that we were doing for subsidy. And from there, we went up to $40,000, and then now we're all the way up to $75,000. And that's only because the homes have to be decent, safe, affordable. Well, we have to make them affordable with the higher subsidies, but they cannot be fixer-uppers, they cannot be in bad shape. We can't put low-income families into a home that's going to put them in a worse situation where something breaks and they're not able to afford to fix it. So, this is why our subsidies are so high. So, before, we used to be able to help 10 families. Now we're down to about four, three per year.
But the subsidy amount was approved by HUD?
Yes, actually, we're able to do HUD subsidy amount. It's like $200,000. So, as long as we don't get higher than that, we're okay. So, yeah, we did get all that approved. These are some of the homes that were purchased. We did five, eight last year. They're pretty nice homes, decent, pretty new mostly. Another program that we funded was lighting retrofit. This cost our department or HUD $33,086. We did convert 240 lights around the city. All of these lights had to be located in low-to-moderate areas. We did get with, the City Commissioners had input on what lights could be or needed to be retrofitted. I believe the Public Works Department is going to apply for this funding for this, again, for this coming fiscal year.
What is the maximum amount that can be requested? Because I know you have a formula, but for this specific, for street lighting, what's the maximum amount that can be allocated for this specific?
So, out of the 930, let's say, 15% can go to nonprofits. It doesn't have to, but that's their max. 20% goes to admin. So, whatever is left is what would go to other programs like this.
There's some maximum.
There's no maximum?
No maximum, no. Other than what we take out. And normally, we, you know, our board and as do you all want to fund nonprofits, right? Because they provide social services for our low-modern income families. So, we take out the 15% for the nonprofits, for the social services, and then the 20% for admin. And then what's left is what is for all these other projects.
I think I'd just ask when you're briefing your board and then for the Commission to also consider that we do have a concern, I think, throughout the community with lighting. And if this is an opportunity, I know that there is several lower-income neighborhoods, especially in District 2, that could utilize more, and everybody's neighborhoods as well. So, I just wonder if we could expand that because from what I understand, we have another, I was talking with Anna, we have another grant that's kind of on hold with lighting. And, you know, we just, when we do only like six per district, it really doesn't, in my view, make a significant impact. And so, if this is a tool to have additional lighting, which is a big concern.
Right. Is that the Energy Efficiency Block Grant?
From, yes.
Okay, I'm not, I haven't gotten familiar with that, but I'd be happy to work with Anna if we can.
Right, the Department of Energy.
Okay, DOE, okay. Yeah, so these, we, they retrofitted them from the regular, you know, yellow lights. And you can see there the picture of the before and after. Did I skip one? No. This is Los Vecinos. This project has taken a while. We funded $454,000 out of CDBG money. And when we got with the Housing Authority, they wanted to partner with us to do all three streets. And in addition to that, we also added parking. So, that very first street that we did is the one that we added parking. We did expend all of our money on that one. And now, we're not involved with the other two because our funding has exhausted, I'm sorry. So, the other two are now under construction.
Excuse me, Arnold. Please don't leave. Yeah, please don't leave. Talk to you once you're done.
Okay. This is Vestal Park Lighting, Phase 3. We've done two phases. This is the third phase. We finished it, $216,000. We had actually allocated $255,000 to this project, but it came in under budget at $216,000. So what was left, we reallocated to Vestal Park Improvements. And that's going to be on the next slide. But we did come, we had to do a substantial amendment. We came before the City Commission to get that money reallocated. But this project has been completed. And Vestal Park Improvements, this was a part of the 36,000 or 30, the funds that were left from the other project in addition to other funds that we had from a previous year. And the improvements that were done at Vestal Park on Lafayette Avenue, they did a walking trail, a basketball court. They added solar-powered lights to the trail. And all of this work was done in-house by our Public Works Department. So, that saved a substantial amount of money. We did not have to contract out any of this work. In addition to the fact that it's forced account labor, so we didn't have to do Davis Bacon. Next, this is part of the other project. The, we did solar-powered street lighting and also the retrofitting. These, we did 45 lights around the city. They're solar-powered. We found it a lot easier, well, faster to do this. Of course, our funding, we get funded annually, so we really need to use our funds annually. By July 31st, there's a formula that we have to... um, annually. By July thirty-first, there's a formula that we have to, uh, hit an expenditure ratio. So, um, these forty-five lights were, uh, placed throughout the city, again, low to moderate income, uh, areas. And also the, um, commissioners had some input on where these lights were going to be installed. And these also were installed by our public, public works department, which also saved us a lot of money. Uh, clearance and demolition, uh, this is a collaborative effort that we have with the code compliance department and planning. And, uh, these also are being done by our public works department. They're demoing them. What we're paying for basically is to haul away the debris. There, there was eight properties that had been, um, already identified and nine structures. One of the properties had two structures in it. Um, I didn't update this slide, but so far we've done, uh, seven properties. We have one left and, uh, eight structures. So the, the last one will be done, uh, next week, I believe. And the total amount of money from here was seventy-two thousand, two sixty-six. We still have some funding available. And, uh, we also, the code compliance, uh, department has a list of more homes already that they've identified. So basically, we just need to do the environmentals and, and get going. Once we do the last one, then we'll know exactly how much we have left and how many more homes we can demolish.
Something I've been doing during my revitalization walks, and some of you guys are gonna be starting yours, is identifying houses that would be good for the demo program and then passing that list to Sandy for consideration.
Right. And they are also applying for more funding this year. Further, um, we, our meeting is on Tuesday. Presentations, applicants will do presentations on Tuesday at five-thirty at, uh, the Cultural Arts Center, if anybody wants to be present.
As an FYI, CDBG can only be used for housing demolition, not for commercial demolition?
We did ask, they said, you know, if it was being used as a, you know, for drug activity and stuff like that. Uh, but, but they do have to approve it.
Say that again?
Residential or commercial?
It can be commercial if, if what?
If it's being used like for drug activity or, um, you know, homeless.
Okay, so how would you identify, or, or would there have to be some kind of police report or?
Right. Police reports or, or code, you know, um, if they can attest that there's activity going on. We just document it.
So long as it's in a low income area?
Yes, exactly. Yes.
Been working with Mark on it. Because under Sandy's program, it has to be, uh, consensual, right? They have to sign off on it. There are some places.
There's some downtown places I can think of that.
Yeah.
But the one we did on First Street was not consensual. We actually took that to the board of officers.
Yeah, exactly.
That was a force condemnation.
And we can use it for force condemnation, right?
Yes. So in that case, we did, uh, place a lien on the property. For the amount that was spent.
But that wasn't CDBG, right?
Yes. It was. Mm-hmm. Yes, we also had to do an asbestos survey on that one. The social service agencies, these are the ones that we funded last year, um, a hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three. This is the fifteen percent that I was talking about from this, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. So all of these funds have been exhausted. We did help a total of nineteen hundred fifty-four beneficiaries with these funds. And, uh, the funded agencies were listed there, Boys and Girls Club, Maggie's House, Court Appointed Special Advocates, Family Crisis Center, and Loaves and Fishes. These are just more pictures from the sub recipients that they, um, sent to us for our annual report. And then these are the bene, the sub recipients that were funded this current year. So right now we're funding Boys and Girls Club, Loaves and Fishes, Maggie's House, Casa, Amigos del Valle Family Crisis Center, Sunshine Haven, Area Agency on Aging, and Aging and Disability Resource Center. So all of that totals up to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, forty-five dollars. And that is the fifteen percent for this year. Um, this year they kind of did a little bit different. They kind of just gave everybody an even amount, um, with the exception of two. Um, this is a fire hydrant project that we're working with, uh, Harlingen Waterworks System. Uh, we allocated three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. And they actually went for bid, out for bid. This is a little outdated also. They went out for bids already. Um, the lowest bidder came in at two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two twenty-six. So that was, uh, central line construction. And, uh, they've already been given the notice of award. Right now they're working on doing the notice to proceed. So they will be installing nine fire hydrants, um, four hundred and forty linear feet of eight inch water line. Um, this is a, a grant that we applied for in addition to our CDBG and, and home funds. Uh, it's called Healthy Homes. Um, we finally got it going. Uh, we applied in twenty twenty-two. We got awarded in June of twenty twenty-three. Um, we, we had to go to trainings and, and, um, do environmental reviews. Uh, they actually gave us, they finally gave us the release of, uh, funds on September of twenty twenty-four. We have since taken eighty-two applications. Uh, we've determined eligibility for twenty-six families, applicants. And, uh, right now they've done about eighteen inspections. Right here was twelve. And we just completed our first home, um, last week. The repairs are only up to ten thousand per home. Um, and, uh, this is only to address safety concerns, health and safety concerns, um, in the home. So if they come in wanting to remodel their kitchen or something like that, it's, it, it just has to, we have to approve, um, the concern that it's affecting their health or safety hazards.
On this one, um, Sandy, these applica, applications, are they recent applications that you're reviewing?
Yes.
Are any of them related to the flood?
Um, there's some, there's some that have come back, uh, with, um, saying that, you know, their conditions are way worse now. So I might as well say that now. What I mentioned earlier for the funding that we have for the housing rehabilitation reconstruction, um, I've been talking to Mr. Gabe and Josh and Oscar about this. And, uh, we can actually use that funding for emergency, um, situations. The max is ten thousand per home. Um, but we would be able to help about forty families instead of doing two or three new reconstruction homes. Uh, that is already part of our policy that we have under that, um, under that program. So it's not something that we would have to go and reallocate or go through substantial amendments or anything like that. We have about four hundred thousand dollars. So that we could use for, uh, emergency situations, which also includes, um, disaster, natural disasters like floods and fires. So.
And that's also through the Healthy Homes program?
No, that is part of CDBG. It's through the, um, housing rehabilitation reconstruction.
So if I understand correctly, then this next year you won't redo two homes?
Right.
You will utilize this. Okay.
Yes.
So, um, just given the urgency right now of what's happening in the community, um, Gabe, do we, can we set up? I don't know if we need to set up like a workshop or just something so that way we get a consensus from the commission to see if this is, uh, where everybody wants to go? Because I think it would, it, it, every day, I, I'm, I'm sure I'm not the only one, but every day I'm getting emails and messages from people wanting to know, when is FEMA gonna come? And save the day. And we can't wait on Washington or Austin to come save us. And if we have some dollars, um, I'd like to be able to do that. So how can we?
When do you think you'll be ready?
Uh, we're, we're working on, um, the applications, um.
I mean, to kickstart, to kickstart the project?
We could start in maybe two weeks the most because we do have to start tiered environmentals and, 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 uh.
So I think in two weeks we could make an announcement, but they still have to be low to moderate income.
Yes.
And they have to be in the low to moderate income area. So it's not for everybody.
So my question, I guess, is, um, do, can, since this is just a presentation, can we give that directive now?
Oh, she's already started.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, okay, with, and, and it doesn't need a consensus of the commission to do?
Well, she needs to come back and get approval from the commission to do that. But I've already given her the directive to start the process of doing that. We did that about a month and a half ago?
Right. Mm-hmm. But we had to check policies and all that and make sure that it is something that qualifies. Uh, it is in our internal policy. Um, it does, you know, specifically state emergency situations. Talks about natural disasters, flooding, fire.
Well, I remember Daniel and I talking in city, uh, uh, downstairs on, while everything was going on and talking about this exact thing and whether it's possible. So, um, and that was while people were still being rescued. So I think whatever, whatever we can do to. Expedite that.
And, um, expedite is not a word that HUD likes to use. Uh, so it takes a long time to get something going. And so that's why, uh, we started, I don't know, over a month and a half ago. And we're still not ready to implement because of the guidelines and all the rules you have to follow with HUD. So it takes a while.
So I guess what I'm asking is, um, do we need to set up a meeting aside from our regular scheduled meeting? So that way we can give more attention to this issue? Or is this something that's going to happen? And then you notify the commission that we've, we're ready to go and we can share?
I think you still need final approval from the commission, correct, to do that?
Not necessarily, because it is part of the housing rehab reconstruction program.
Okay, can you just do it? Okay. Well, whenever you're ready to start taking the applications, let me know. And I'll let the commission know that we're starting.
Okay.
So that they can let their constituents know that they need to come talk to you to fill out an application. Is it a loan or is it a grant?
It's a grant.
It's a grant.
It's a grant.
What I would like is, uh, and I know this is a, a tall order and I'm, I'm sorry, but if you could put something together, for Daniel, for his, uh, town hall that's happening on Thursday, just as a.
Tomorrow, that's tomorrow.
I know. That's why I'm saying, and, and I'm sorry, but even if it's something, if it's something small, just to share. Um, and then obviously it would be nice to include in all of the, of, of our, of our town halls. And I'm thinking we may even have to have some kind of, uh, community event just to let people know at the community center or something to, to get information.
I think media can help us also, maybe with some, with some.
We have, we have flyers already and we're starting.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we can get you something for tomorrow. We already have.
You said you had enough for forty families, right?
Yes. I mean, if everybody takes the cap, right? But it's gonna be.
I think everybody will need to take the cap.
Yes.
And so low, so there's a difference between, um, low income area and low income family.
Right. So in this case, it's gonna be based on the family. So it is household income. So we do check. And, and that's what takes the while. So, I mean, to me, they can start coming already and, and applying because we have to still determine eligibility. We do have to procure for a pool of contractors. You know, maybe ten, you know, that we can use on a rotating basis because, you know, going out for quotes, it's not gonna work. You know, we can't.
Right, it's not ideal.
Yeah, no. So, yeah, that's where, we're in the process of all that right now. But we can, you know, we can start taking applications and then have people start bringing in their income information and pictures, you know.
As many tracks as we can run simultaneously. We just need to do that.
And I think the important thing, this question you asked, it is a grant.
Yes. It, it's, um, it, it is for homeowners. They have to own the home. They cannot be, um, late on taxes. And, uh, and it is a deferred forgivable though, uh, five year.
You can present to them tomorrow about this.
Okay.
We are not pushing you to do that, but if you could at least provide some info, in, in, for information, I think that would be, that would be great. This is, um, this is a good step forward. Thank you for, for everything you do. And I know that it's not easy working, uh, within the constraints of the federal government. We completely understand. And which is why I think we've kind of, uh, not been very aggressive in allowing y'all to come, you know, really navigate this and provide as much information once you already have it and checking all the boxes. So, so thank you for that. We just know that there's a way to assist. And so we wanna make sure that we're doing that.
Right. Thank you.
You know, she did ask me, do you want me to present about this?
Are you ready?
We're always ready, Sandy.
Yes. Am I ready?
That's another question.
That's why I asked you, how soon do you want to start taking?
So, you know, and, and it's okay because I, I will tell you that there are people in the community and, and they don't care if it comes piecemeal. They don't, they just, they want the help. So even if it's not perfect, um, if we can, if we can get started, um, this is one of those that we, it's the, the urgency behind it. And it's not so much the presentation, it's the execution.
Right. Yes. No, we understand. We're ready.
Okay. Well, now that you said ready.
I gotta hold you tight there.
Okay. So this is the home ERP. This is part of what came from, uh, the American Rescue Plan. We got one point two million dollars. We have already allocated two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred for supportive services. Those are on the right hand side. Boys and Girls Club, forty-eight thousand, Family Crisis Center, twenty-four, Loaves and Fishes, thirty-six, one twenty, Sunny Glen, thirty thousand, nine hundred, and Valley Haven, fifty thousand. So, um, these nonprofits have assisted a total of, uh, seventy-eight households that are at risk of homelessness and thirty-one households that are defined as homeless for a total of three hundred and thirteen individual beneficiaries. This is about a month old. So right now it's a little bit more than that. This is what you spoke of, Mayor. Uh, thank you all so much for advocating for this program. We're, we're actually really excited. The same thing, we've already started with flyers and with applications and everything for this program, where these two programs, may I say, um, one of them is the General Assistance and it's for veterans. The city, uh, was awarded four hundred thousand dollars for that one and five hundred thousand for the Housing for Heroes. The Housing for Heroes, I believe it's thirty-five thousand max per, per household, um, to help with, um, to improve accessibility for physical disabilities, repair projects, to correct dangerous conditions, and weatherization projects to correct elements from entering the home. So we're ready to start this one too. I know we have to kick it off by July first. Um, I've already registered for, um, for the kickoff web, webinar that's gonna take place on, I think it's on the twenty-seventh. So.
Mayor, the general assistance one can actually be used for mortgage payments?
Yes.
Yeah, all sorts of, uh, financial.
Rental assistance, um, mortgage, utilities, uh, even like daycare and.
And what's the maximum on that?
The max?
Yeah, on the general assistance?
Uh, depending on what it is, like for rental, uh, it's six thousand, I believe, per household, rental mortgage utilities. Um, I haven't read all the ins and outs of everything yet, but we did already have our meeting and assignments. Who's gonna take applications and who's gonna, who's gonna, um, send out the contractors and do POs and all that. So.
So on this, Sandy, I'd ask if you can, I know you've got a lot on your plate, and this might even help you. If you can, uh, just reach out to the Veterans Advisory Board that we have, the chair, and just kind of give them information so that they can share. I know that they have been doing, I don't know if they did this the last time, but they've been setting up, um, at, at, um, market days, a little booth, and just providing information. I think this is a good way to get the information out. And I only say this because, um, you know, having, having been there in the meeting, wouldn't you agree? The most important thing is expending the funds and doing it as quickly as possible. Because, uh, there were, I think that we were able to be, um, successful because others were not, um, living up to, you know, the, uh, expenditure, that ratio and, you know, falling unsatisf, you know, satisfactory. So I think they're able to take from here to provide over here. And so, um, I wanna say that March of twenty twenty-six is sixty percent that needs to be expended. Um, so it would be, I mean, how wonderful would it be? By March of twenty twenty-six, you're done. Uh, I think that would guarantee you that upon renewals, that this will be something that you'll be able to provide year after, after year. Wouldn't you agree?
Right. Um, the good thing is we already, like, with the CDBG CV during COVID, we did have a financial assistance program where we helped families with, um, rent mortgage utilities. assistance program where we helped families with rent mortgage utilities. So we kind of already have the, we know what to do, basically.
I have no doubt.
Yeah. And the housing, same thing. We have the Healthy Homes one that is, it's been a headache to get it going, but we're there now. And the procurement process also. Luckily, like I said, we have, we've already went through that pain, so we're ready for these other ones to continue.
I think it'd be great in August if we just have you back on the, on the agenda just to kinda give us an update of where you are and that it's up and running.
Okay.
What did you say? The veterans funds have to be expended by, you said March?
No, 60% March.
Oh, 60% March, okay.
They have to be expended by August of '26.
August of '26?
Yes.
Okay.
We can do that.
We can do that. Well, it's, it's not a lot, it's a lot of money, but if you give the max on the housing, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's not, we have way many, way more veterans in the community than we can serve, so I think it should be, it should be rather easy to entertain.
So I know the application asked for the service area and it said Cameron County. That's one of the questions. Okay. I don't know. No, that was one of the questions.
Moving along.
Moving along. Yes, Har- City of Harlingen, but it is for Cameron County. You're absolutely...
Sandy, would you mind going back to the slide about the streetlights? Hey, I'm sorry. I was hoping you were here and then I saw you pop up to leave and I wanted to catch you before you ran.
The retros or the...
The one right before this one. The one about, that one. Thank you. I noticed that it seems like a lot of the streetlights you and I have reported a year or two ago still haven't been fixed or reported. Is that an issue on the AEP side? Like, are they having like supply issues or do we need to be going out to buy them?
That's exactly right, yeah, supply issue. So not only are they having supply issues, but we had given them this, this job here for the retrofit, 250, so they were tackling that and also trying to, trying to, trying to juggle the both. So they attended to the 250 lights or 240 lights. So some of those lights that, that we report on a weekly, on a weekly night audit, were kinda, were kinda sort of pushed back a little bit for that, for that, for that project right there.
So the lights that aren't working were pushed back because they focused on replacing the old lights with the new lights?
Yes. And like I said, the main thing is, is the inventory. You know, they have to order, you know, that was, that was a little bit of setback as well from their, from their vendors or whatnot.
Okay. And have they given us an update on when they think they'll be caught up?
I have a, I have actually access to, to their, to their software or software to, to their systems. And I can see the ones that are pending. Some of them also require a little bit of construction. I have a status update, so there's a good, there's a good tend that requiring construction, but, but they're not, they haven't gone unattended. They're still, they're still pending.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, no problem.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions?
Good report, Sandy.
Thank you.
Sorry I interrupted you along the way.
Oh, no. It makes it more comfortable.
Item, item number nine, public hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please submit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. I don't, I don't think there was anybody...
Yeah, I don't think we have anyone signed up. We'll just go through these quickly. Item 9A, public hearing for the voluntary annexation of 88.40 acres of land out of the portion of blocks 15 and 16 subdivision C located along Kroger Avenue, Lafayette Avenue, west of Chester Park. This time we'll open the public hearing on this item. Having no one here to speak for or against the item, we'll close the public hearing on item A. Public item, public hearing 9B, public hearing for rezoning request for residential single family district to general retail district to 3.6780 acres out of block 23 Briggs and Coleman, Briggs Coleman subdivision, section 49, located on the south side of Montezuma, approximately 2395 feet west of the 20, of 25th Street. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Having no one's here to speak for or against this item, we'll close the public hearing. 9C, public hearing for rezoning request from residential multifamily district to general retail district for 7.52 acres of land bearing a legal description of lot 1, block 1, Winsong subdivision located south of Lincoln Avenue, approximately 910 feet east of South Palm Court Drive. This time we'll open the public hearing. Having no one here to speak for or against this item, we'll close the public hearing. 9D, public hearing for a SUP to allow a community residential facility in general retail district on a property bearing a legal description of 5.9236 acres out of 8.6170 acres out of block 55. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Having no one here to speak for or against this item, we'll close the public hearing at this time. And before we go to item 10, action items, we're gonna take a two minute break. Hi, it's now 6:56 PM and we did take a small, brief break and we are now back in open session. And Melinda, we left off on item 10.
We came here. Action items. City commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item 10A, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for the voluntary annexation of 88.40 acres of land out of a portion of blocks 15 and 16 subdivision C located along Kroger Avenue, Lafayette Avenue, west of Chester Park Road. Applicant Javier Nogosa, planning and development.
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the City of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose 88.40 acres out of a portion of blocks 15 and 16 Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision C located along the, the south side of Kroger Avenue, Lafayette Avenue, west of Chester Park Road, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a request to rezone from residential single family district to general retail district to 3.6780 acres out of block 23 Briggs and Coleman subdivision, planning and development.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single family R1 district to general retail GR district for 3.6780 acres out of block 23 Briggs and Coleman subdivision of section 49 located on the south side of Montezuma Road, approximately 2,395 feet west of 25th Street, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item C, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a request to rezone from residential multifamily district to general retail district for 7.52 acres of land bearing a legal description of lot 1, block 1, Winsong subdivision located south of Lincoln Avenue, approximately 910 feet east of South Palm Court Drive, planning and development.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential multifamily M2 district to general retail GR district for 7.52 acres, lot 1, block 1, Winsong subdivision located on the south side of West Lincoln Avenue, approximately 910 feet east of South Palm Court Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit request to allow a community residential facility in a general retail district on a property bearing a legal description of 5.9236 acres out of 8.6170 acres out of block 55 David and Stevenson subdivision located on the southeast corner of Breedlove Street and North Loop 499, planning and development.
Motion.
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
This is, I don't think it had a, I don't, ordinance.
It needs an ordinance.
This is D, right?
D.
Yes, D.
10D.
He needs the ordinance, he's not the ordinance.
Did, did you include an ordinance in here?
It seems to be we forgot the ordinance for this. Well, we need the ordinance to pass.
It says approve an ordinance.
Yeah, no, they just forgot to put it in.
The actual ordinance portion is missing.
How fast would it take you to go get it? Do you need like run to your office or?
Um, actually, I think I have it on my phone. I can probably email it.
Can you just read the caption for us, please?
Sure.
Save you some.
Save me some time. Or why don't you find that and step aside and we will skip this for right now and go to item E and then we'll come right back at you and hopefully you have it. Yes, ma'am. Item E.
Consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending the City of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year 2025, Finance Department.
An ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget for the City of Harlingen, Texas for fiscal year October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025, providing for publication of the caption of this ordinance and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
I have one quick question here. Could you provide me with the financials for the Free Trade Bridge, please?
I can.
Please.
Oh, I'll get that to you right away. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And then we're going to move on to item H while Saul does that.
H. Consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to award a construction contract with SLR Building Contractors LLC for the animal shelter outdoor kennels extension designed in-house by the city, city's engineering department, engineering department.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a question, several.
Yes.
On this particular one, did you try to talk to the individuals at the high schools so they can do the work? See, i- if the students can do housing for CDBG, they can knock this out and have the cost.
You mean the designer or the construction?
They can do both. They've done designs for the houses. Is Sandy gone already?
We're gonna get started on this, right? And this is summer projects. I think the schools will, the kids will be out for the summer. And then I'm, I'm very familiar with that project. It's a beginning, they started at the beginning of the year. It's a whole deal. They've got the arc, you, you know, don't you really? You've got, they've got the architect that runs that department. And so they, they, it's not, it's not something that they, that's like their project, like throughout the year. They don't have multiple, right?
So we, we could involve the students in the construction project, you know, but for them to build it, I wouldn't.
How long does this gotta take for the construction to, with the contractor?
We allocated four months for the construction, but we have to wait for the materials deliveries so that, because it's a metal structure, it could take, I'd say maybe two months to four additional. But when we have all the materials, we can start, right? In, in four months after that. Maximum eight months.
That's a big difference.
It is a big difference because of the materials lead times. And, and steel, well, you know, it could take time, so. It's a prefabricated metal building, so.
I have another question. So far, what are the expenses to operate this animal shelter that we have going?
That's outside the scope and Luis wouldn't have that information.
Would refer that to Ms. Shannon Harvey.
That's outside the scope. We'll just stay on the item in front of us.
Madam Mayor, is there a reason why you keep on blocking me off?
Because you are not following the rules and procedures, Commissioner, that's why. If you would like for it to be on the agenda, I ask you to follow the rules, get another Commissioner, have it on the agenda, and we'll be happy to entertain it at that time. What I'm trying to do is get through this meeting, which is why we're moving around so that way we can be efficient with our time while Saul looks at the ordinance. You are going off topic like you always do and we're just keeping you and reeling you back in. So if you have a question that is germane to the item on the agenda, happy to hear it. Luis is our engineer, he's not gonna have that information. He's not prepared for that and he's not required to answer those questions.
Appreciate your courtesy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Better not ask.
Fantastic. Moving on.
So I made a motion, I think Commissioner Mesmore seconded.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Saul, you ready? And can Saul read the, the caption or does it have to be Mark?
I don't have the ordinance.
Okay.
It wasn't oversight on that one, so we'll have to put it back on the June 4th meeting, table it tonight and put it back on for June 4th.
Can you go get that? It's gonna delay this project?
Yeah, because it's already been delayed, right?
I don't have keys to launch. We would have to type it up.
Okay, so.
Mayor, I don't think that that delay is gonna, gonna be a problem. We're still within our option period.
Are you sure?
And so if we have the, the first reading on June 4th and the second, the second reading would have to be June 18th.
Okay. We just don't want it to delay anything, so.
I believe that, that's, I, I think the main, even if that were to be on the edge of our option period, which I don't think it is, as long as it passed the first reading, that would, and that would be, would be, what we would be looking out for. And then also, and Mark, you may have to clarify this for me. Tonight's public hearing would satisfy the requirement for...
I believe so.
Yeah, because we, we had the public hearing, but there was somebody here.
No, okay. And so, so we would be talking about just a...
Just an ordinance, yeah. There's no more publication required.
Based on your statements, we're going to table, is there a motion to table based on Allen's? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate the commission's consideration. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Okay. Now let's go back to F, Melinda.
Okay. Consideration and possible action to approve the preliminary construction plans and final plan with conditions of the proposed villas at Paso Real subdivision bearing a legal description of 12.537 acres being a part of or portion of, out of lots 1, 2, 7, and 8, block 146 located at the northwest corner of Hayne Drive and Farm Road 509, planning and development.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to sign an access and utility easement document for the installation of an additional distribution line on the subject property bearing a legal description of 0.174 acres out of block 67 Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision, planning and development.
Any motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item I, consideration and possible action to select the highest ranking consulting firm and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract pursuant to RFQ number 2025-08 Historic Resources Survey Special Projects Department.
Do we have questions for Anna?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Anna. Opposed, motion carries, thank you, Anna.
Item J, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution suspending the June 24th, 2025 effective date of the proposal by Texas Gas Service Company, a division of One Gas, Inc., Rio Grande Valley Service Area to implement interim grip rate adjustments for gas utility investment in 2024 and requiring delivery of this resolution to the company and legal counsel, city manager.
And Gabe, this is the usual annual game plan.
Yes, and it's not gonna cost the city anything? It's gonna give my council taking the lead.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 11, board appointments, specifically appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointment and/or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or bylaws.
I would like to reappoint Brandy Pena to Keep Harlingen Beautiful.
Are we trying to do attrition in Keep Harlingen Beautiful, or did I, so, do you want a reappointment?
Yes, she actually shows up to the meetings.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
I don't know, I just, that's a good one then, all right, okay. You said none, none, none?
I have, I have one.
Okay.
I want to reappoint Raymond Reyes to the Downtown Improvement Board.
All right, can I get a motion?
I can motion approve all the appointment or reappointments.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 12, executive session, all items listed in this section will be deliberated in a closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor. However, city commission will not take any action in closed session. Item 12A, pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, attorney consultation and contemplated litigation.
All right.
Make a motion to approve going into executive session?
Second.
Time is now 7:11 PM, and we are moving into executive session, is there a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we are now in executive session. All right, all right, the time is now 7:39 PM, and we are back from executive session, and Melinda?
Item 13, action on executive session items, the city commission will reconvene in open session and may take action on any item listed in the executive session section of this agenda. 13A, consideration and possible action on item 12A, as discussed in executive session.
Motion proceeded and as discussed. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and that is it, thank you, and we are adjourned.